Victor, five seconds. Good afternoon and welcome to the Orange County School Board's work session, which has been scheduled for today for the purpose of discussing School Board Policy, JIC Code of Student Conduct and JICK Threats. The public will not have an opportunity to participate in this work session to provide public comment because this is not a regularly scheduled school board meeting. No action will be taken today, and there will be no pre-agenda period in which we would normally take comments from the public on non-agenda items. The public will have an opportunity to provide input at a future school board meeting regarding both of these policies. Also want to remind anyone who might be watching that board members will not be engaged in outside electronic or digital communication during our work session so that they can focus entirely on the meeting. So I would ask that if you wish to reach out to any school board members, you either, you do so after the work session. Board members are attending both in person and telephonically. So let me take roll call. Member Gallo.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Member Lopez. Member Lopez. I'll come back to Member Lopez in a minute. I believe we have her on the line. Member Cobert.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Thank you. Member Gould.
Good afternoon.
Member Felder.
Good afternoon.
Member Castredal. Member Castredal, are you on the line with us? No? Okay. And Member Bird.
Good afternoon.
And myself, I'm present. Let's go back to Member Lopez. Okay, so at this time, we have four members present in the chambers and we have, we are absent two of our board members. And I also want to recognize that with our vice chair calling in, that as the board has adopted, in the event of my need to excuse myself for any reason, our former, our immediately proceeding, is that the right term? Yeah. Bottom line, Member Cobert is in charge if I have to leave. She takes over his chair during this meeting. As I have explained, the purpose of today's meeting-
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Member Lopez. All right, let me clarify for the record that Member Lopez has joined the meeting. And this is always a good time, now that my phone has gone off in the middle of my opening comments, to remind the public, this would be a good time to turn your phones to silence. Before we begin, we will start with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. Jenkins. You were recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, we have two policies to cover today. That is JIC and JICK, Code of Student Conduct and Threats. We will have Attorney Sarah Kapeski walk you through it.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Can you remove this so you can hear me better? It says it's on.
We can hear you better now, thank you.
I think it was my mask. As Dr. Jenkins was saying, we will be presenting JIC Code of Student Conduct and JICK Threats. JIC Code of Student Conduct is really just a brief overview of what's currently in the code, and we're asking for input from board members at this time as well to any suggestions they may have for the upcoming school year. And then JICK Threats, if you'll remember, we came before you had a rule development workshop at the beginning of December, and there were some suggested changes, so we thought we'd bring it back as a work session so we can really work on the policy together. Our agenda for this afternoon is we're going to do an overview of the policies, timeline, summary of actions, proposed revisions, next steps, questions, and discussion. The purpose of the revisions of these policies are as follows: to assure compliance with all applicable federal, state laws, state Board of Education rules, board policies, administrative rules, procedures, and guidelines, and to obtain board member input for policies. Our tentative schedule, we were at Cabinet yesterday. Today, we are at the work session, February 2nd. The Rule Development Workshop will be April 22nd, 2021, and the public hearing is to be determined at this time. The effective date for JIC Code of Student Conduct will be the first day of school for the 2021-2022 school year, which is August 10th, 2021, should it be adopted before that date. And then again, the effective date for JICK will be determined as soon as we have a public hearing date for that. And with that, I'm going to turn JIC Code of Student Conduct over to the area administrators. I have Ms. Delilah Hernandez here to present that portion.
All right, and let me, just for a quick reminder to board members, we are going to use our normal queuing system for those of us who are here in the chambers. For those of you who are calling in, please queue Dr. Williams, who will then use our normal queuing system to identify where you are in the queuing order. So this should work very nicely. Dr. Williams, thanks for taking on this role. Ms. Hernandez. Hard time hearing you. Let's make sure the mic is on. And it's a little high. A rule follower, we like them. Thank you.
Is this better? Okay, good afternoon. Our purpose is to review the current Code of Student Conduct and seek input from the School Board of Orange County, Florida, for revisions to the 2021-22 code. Action summary: Present an overview of the code to board members, seek input, and present staff recommendations. I'm going to review the sections of the code with you and just briefly highlight some areas. We start off with the preface. This is where we have our acknowledgement of the Code of Student Conduct, our Code of Student Conduct summary, and then the summary of changes. Starting off with the introduction, this is where we have our section on jurisdiction and the notice of limited responsibility for supervising our students. In Section 1 is where you will find our information on FERBA. Moving on to Section 2, Student Rights and Responsibilities, you'll find the Safe Harbor Provision, Participation in Extracurricular/Cocurricular Activities, and our Code of Civility. Section 3, Student Notification, includes information for student dress, standards of conduct for students using transportation, includes information on possession use of controlled substances and alcohol, same possession of firearms, threats and false reports, and the zero tolerance for school-related violent crime. Also in Section 3, we'll find search of an individual, bullying and harassment, and Title IX information. Section 4 and 5, Disciplinary Response Code, this is where you'll find our disciplinary response code overview and information on all of our four offenses, levels 1 through 4. Section 6, Procedures for Disciplinary Action, this is where you'll find the procedures for the level 1 through 4 offenses for both elementary and secondary, including procedures for students eligible under IDEA 504 and ADA. You'll also find our procedures for Title IX, procedures for felony suspension, and for early reentry of fully expelled students. Our proposed revisions for the next school year, 2021-22, are as follows: Add language to the acknowledgement page acknowledging receipt of the code above the signature line. Add "in loco parentis" language to the introduction section. Add definitions for direct and indirect threats. Add a tobacco/vaping-free section to student notifications. Add sexting to a Level 3 as sexual harassment that applies to the initial sender/receiver. Add repeated Level 3 threats to a Level 4C threats to a person. Add drug paraphernalia to Level 4T, and that's to be in compliance with CESSAR. Add intent-to-sell to Level 4U drugs. Revised the appeal procedure for levels 1 through 3 to allow the area or associate superintendent to uphold or overturn a principal's decision. Remove procedures for removal from participation in extracurricular/cocurricular programs, and also to add CESSAR language to policy JIC and remove it from JICK. Next steps: Work with board members, OCPS employees, and the community to make revisions to the Code of Student Conduct for the 2021-2022 school year.
And that concludes the presentation for JIC Code of Student Conduct. Dr. Jenkins.
Madam Chair, members of the board, happy to entertain any questions or discussion. At this point, there will be individual meetings with board members as well, but happy to hear your discussion at this point before we move on to threats.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jenkins. So let me open the floor to any comments or questions that board members have at this time. That includes those of you calling in, so I'll give you just a minute to queue in should you choose to. Member Felder. You were recognized.
Yes, thank you. Regarding the sign-in policy, when students get the Code of Conduct, I don't know whether or not, have you all seen some of the concerns, but I know when I was teaching, a lot of times, the students, they would not sign. And I saw where you were going to make an adjustment to the language. I don't know what kind of adjustment, I guess you'll individually tell us, but I have some real concerns because if the student didn't sign, and then there was a conduct that they did that should have been covered, and it was covered, but they didn't sign to acknowledge, I mean, how do you work around that in terms of getting them to sign? Because a lot of times, they won't sign, and the teacher can't make them sign. So would receipt of it meaning, would it mean that even if they didn't sign, the fact that you received it, is that good enough? Or how are we working that? Because in the 40 years that I've taught, I know that we've had, and usually you sign it the seventh period of the day, and sometimes they're not even there, or whatever. So my concern is that if a parent comes and says, "Well, my child didn't sign it," so it's the rebuttal of that where they received it, and they chose not to sign. What do we do?
Member Felder, excellent, real-world question. Ms. Kapeski?
Absolutely.
And perhaps we need to have language that clarifies what will happen in that case.
So we do currently have in JIC the current policy that adopts the Code of Student Conduct that says the code will be distributed, I believe is the phrase that we use, and reviewed. But there's no requirement under state statute, which I was just looking at 1,006.07, that requires them to actually sign that they have read and understand and have received it. So we, and I want to find the exact language because I don't want to misquote statute, but it says that "all schools shall distribute the code to all students." So the acknowledgement is really just that, did we distribute it to the students? And so we were thinking of adding a line in that says, "I have acknowledged that the Code of Student Conduct is on my student device," because we've worked with our digital learning folks, and they have put the Code of Student Conduct on all student devices, and now that every student is one-to-one, therefore, every student has a copy of the code. So statutorily, we're meeting that expectation. As to students who refuse to sign it, there are a couple of, or another option, I believe, in place, but I will let the area administrators, if they want to speak to that, to help answer that question further.
And also, in the student is in their devices, you know, sometimes the devices don't work or something is wrong with the devices. I was just wondering, to protect the teacher, when we know that we're getting the Code of Conduct and it's to be distributed to the students, is there some way that the teacher can acknowledge and is documented that they have given? You know, I have 20 students in my class, seventh period, only 15 came. It's some kind of way that the acknowledgement that the teacher did indeed do what he or she was supposed to do to cover us, I mean, to cover teachers, because that is so important, you know? If they didn't get it, they didn't read it, that's the leverage that they have to not have to be complying with whatever the rules are. And if there's a problem with the devices, because it's computers, it's not perfect. Man created them, so we're not perfect. I just want to make sure that we have covered every necessary base that we need to cover to make sure that as a district, we are covered in terms of doing what we said that we were going to do regarding the Code of Conduct. That's all. And I know, I don't mean to be picky, but I've been there, and I understand how that works. So I just want to make sure, and you can probably address that. Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
For the paper and pencil, teachers get a roster, and they can write down kids that were in their class that reviewed the Student Code of Conduct. They can also indicate who was absent and the kids that refused to sign. The kids that refused to sign, they'll call down to the administrator's office, and if the kid refused to sign, you have two witnesses to say, I'm just going to use my name, Mickey Joyner refused to sign. So you have two adults sign off on that Code of Student Conduct indicating that I refused to sign. And then as far as the digital device, we can add some language to say, if the kid's device is not working at the time of the review, they can add that kid's name to that list.
I knew that. I knew that, but I just wanted you to say it so that for people that are listening, that they know we have that in place. That's all. So thank you so much.
Very good. Member Gallo.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually have more comments after the, I think it'll be more appropriate after we go over the threats, the JICK. But I did want to say that I appreciate the addition of reviewing the level 1 through 3s. I'm happy to see that that's going to be put into our Student Conduct so that it will bring more consistency across the district. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? All right, Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
We are ready to move on to threats.
Ms. Kapeski?
My apologies. The purpose of JICK Threats, we are revising this policy to be consistent with the Florida Department of Education, Office of Safe Schools' model policy regarding threat assessment teams, and also to include threats of self-harm. Action summary: Revisions have been made to the existing policy language to include legislative updates, content, formatting, and terminology edits consistent with statutory language and the model policy. So for the sections pertaining to this policy, under the subsections titled like the introduction, definitions, threat assessment teams, and threats to others, we went through all of those modifications back on December 1st, I believe it was, 2020, at the Rule Development Workshop, and there wasn't a lot of, I apologize.
Feedback?
There wasn't a lot of feedback on those sections, thank you. There wasn't a lot of feedback on those sections, so we did make one additional change in that section, but majority of the changes that we're going to go over today that we've made since that Rule Development Workshop are in the threats of self-harm section. So the only one portion that we have changed since the last time we met was in the introductory statement. It talks about threats that are written or non-written, actions or gestures that threaten the safety of any person or any OCPS school or facility. So instead of putting written or non-written, we thought it would be more clear if we changed it to verbal and written, as opposed to written and non-written. In the threats to self-harm section, we were asked to provide a purpose to that section and to tell the public, basically, we do a whole host of efforts before we refer to law enforcement for a Baker Act. So the language that we are proposing for the purpose statement, we'll read, "The board is committed to fostering a learning environment that promotes a culture of safety, respect, trust, and social emotional support. The board also recognizes the increase of suicidal rates among children and the importance of parent guardian involvement when a child makes a threat of self-harm or exhibits self-injurious behavior. To achieve this goal, OCPS employees shall follow the Threat Procedures Guide when an OCPS student makes a threat of self-harm or exhibits self-injurious behavior. At minimum, procedures addressing the following shall be included within the Threats Procedures Guide. One, supervision of a student when the student makes a threat of self-harm or exhibits self-injurious behavior. Two, notification to the school administrator and OCPS mental health designee. Three, notification and engagement of the parent or guardian throughout the process unless a report has been submitted to the central abuse hotline based upon knowledge or suspicion of abuse, abandonment, or neglect. Four, engagement of intervention and de-escalation strategies for the student conducted by the OCPS mental health designee. Five, engagement of a mobile crisis unit if needed, and six, engagement of law enforcement if needed." As to reporting threats of self-harm when a student makes a threat, all threats of self-harm made by students shall be immediately reported to school administration and the mental health designee. Unless there is reasonable belief that the harm is imminent, then the threat shall be immediately reported to law enforcement and/or emergency services. If a threat of self-harm is made by an adult, then that threat of self-harm shall be immediately reported to law enforcement and/or emergency services. The threat response section, we already had language in our current, we already have language in our current policy that reads, "If an immediate mental health or substance abuse crisis is suspected, school personnel shall follow policies and procedures established by the board and district." We're recommending changing that to just the Threats Procedures Guide, so we continue to talk about the same guide throughout the policy. Florida statutes and state Board of Education rules to engage behavioral health crisis resources. These may include, but are not limited to, and we're recommending adding, conducting a suicide screener, and include in that section, "By an OCPS mental health designee," so our public is aware that it is an OCPS employee who's conducting this type of screener, and engaging mobile crisis teams and law enforcement trained in crisis intervention. Under threat response, "Before a principal or designee contacts law enforcement, the principal or designee shall verify that de-escalation strategies have been utilized, and outreach to a mobile response team has been initiated, unless the principal or designee reasonably believes that delay in removing the student will increase the likelihood of harm to the student or others." And that language comes directly from Section 1,002.20 Florida statutes. The next section under threats of self-harm would be notification to the parent or guardian. This is something that we felt the board also felt very strongly about at our Rule Development Workshop, and if I remember correctly, it was a consensus that you wanted us to add a word to just notify. It wasn't just notify, we wanted to add something else. So I read it earlier, but we added it in here, too. We thought the word engage was a proper term to add. So we put, "The principal or designee shall notify and engage the parent guardian of a student who makes a threat of self-harm as outlined in the Threats Procedures Guide, unless such notification will cause a delay that places a student or another in imminent danger." And then again, we have the caveat or disclaimer that says, "If a report has been submitted to the central abuse hotline based upon knowledge or suspicion of abuse, abandonment, or neglect, the principal or designee may delay notification to the parent or guardian for no more than 24 hours after the student is removed for involuntary examination, if the principal or designee deems the delay to be in the student's best interest." And again, that comes from statute. Under the notification to parent guardian section as well, there's language that says, "The communication to the parent or guardian on behalf of OCPS is strictly for notification purposes and does not supersede the authority of a law enforcement officer to conduct an assessment for an involuntary examination under Florida statutes." And that, too, comes from Section 1,002.20. This next section, we previously had it entitled involuntary examination, but we thought it was more appropriate to title it law enforcement and/or school resource officer involvement, just so that way it's clearer to the public when they're reading. And there was discussion at the Rule Development Workshop regarding the training that our SROs have to go through, and so we copied the language from Section 1,006.12, which requires that mental health training, and put it in the policy, so that way the public is aware that our SROs do have to go through this training in order to be on the campus. So SROs are required by Section 1,006.12 Florida statutes to complete mental health crisis intervention training using a curriculum developed by a national organization with expertise in mental health crisis intervention. The training shall improve officers' knowledge and skills as first responders to incidents involving students with emotional disturbance or mental illness, including de-escalation skills to ensure student and officer safety. Also under the law enforcement and school resource officer section, we did keep the language here, but we added it in a little bit more as it pertains to transporting. So it says, "Law enforcement officers, including SROs, are the only officials on board property that can conduct an involuntary examination assessment to determine whether an involuntary examination is required. In addition, law enforcement officers, including SROs, as well as emergen, oh, sorry, are the only officials on board property that have the authority under Section 394.462 Florida statutes to transport a student and/or employee for an involuntary examination. The decision to allow the parent or guardian to transport rests solely with the law enforcement officer and/or SRO." And then we have subcategories under that that read, "If a law enforcement officer or SRO deems removal of a student for an examination as necessary, the school principal or designee shall contact the parent or guardian to inform the parent guardian of the removal, unless a report has been submitted to the central abuse hotline based upon knowledge of abuse, abandonment, or neglect, then the parent or designee may delay notification for up to 24 hours. This notification is in addition to the notification requirements set forth in Section 394.4599 Florida statutes." And under that statute, both law enforcement and the receiving facility are also required to contact the parent or guardian of the student, so technically, the parent would be receiving three notifications if their child is removed for an involuntary examination: one from the school, one from law enforcement, and then one from the receiving facility." And then we also added in the language down here at the bottom that will read, "To the extent and if needed, an OCPS employee may volunteer to accompany the student to the involuntary examination facility if the student is removed from the school. The OCPS employee will be required to drive separately and is not permitted to consent for treatment for the student." And we thought that this was kind of an important thing to implement because we wanted, even if the employee wouldn't be able to ride with the student or go in the back with the student once they get to the facility, if the parent can't get there in time, or if we can't get ahold of the parent, that still provides the child with comfort knowing someone that they know is there with them. And then the last change, which was not presented at the Rule Development Workshop, is there's an entire section on CESSAR. It's really just one paragraph that basically says, "We're going to report to CESSAR as required by the rules established by the Florida Department of Education." We just think that language is more appropriate in JIC Code of Student Conduct than here, so it would really just be moving that section over to JIC. And since the policies are coming together, at the same time, we just thought it would be appropriate to do it at this moment. Next steps will be revisions to the internal procedures if needed, and training for OCPS employees regarding revisions to policies and new procedures. Dr. Jenkins.
Members of the board, ready to answer any questions and hear your discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Let's begin with Vice Chair Gould.
Thank you, and thank you for the work done on these after our feedback. I think that is, it really helps to clarify some of this. This is not in direct relationship with the presentation, but I think it's kind of timely. I was sitting in on a overview of health and well-being in the U.S., and it was reported this morning that suicides are up for people under 25, and I know that there was just a case in Seminole County of an overdose. And I want to make sure that our team continues to stay vigilant and in contact with our students during this very stressful time, so not directly related, but certainly somewhat related to the topic and us being proactive. So that was it, and thank you for the work.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gould. Let's go to Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to stop by saying thank you to the staff and everybody who worked so hard on this policy. It turned out great. I don't know what else to say than it's just, it's a really, really good piece of policy, and I am very proud to be a part of it. The things that you added with, "Allow an employee to go with the child to a Baker Act facility," the prior parental notification, which we wanted, all of it is going to do wonders to tap down on the Baker Acts that are happening. wonders to tap down on the Baker Acts that are happening. Not so much in our county, because I feel like we've done a really good job of monitoring them in the last few years, but hopefully, this will be a policy that other school boards will emulate, and I'll definitely be sharing with Tallahassee and with the representatives and legislatures up here as they work towards a Baker Act policy statewide. So I just want to say thank you. I'm super proud of this policy, and I'm just indebted for all the work that you did on this. I do have a question, actually a clarification. On, I think it was Slide 18, it was mentioned about adult students, 18 or adults, that would be, it wouldn't go through the same process, and I just wanted to make sure that when we said adults, that we're not including our 18 or 19-year-old students in those adults, and if there's clarifying language, that will separate the two.
Thank you, Board Member Gallo, and thank you very much for you and Board Member Gould for your praise of this policy. I wish I could take all the credit, but I can't. I sit on the District Threat Assessment Team, and we worked on this policy together. So we have members from district police on that team, school, our student discipline, mental health, ESE 504, and I think I got everybody, a couple other legal people also sit on that team, but they're all here with me today, and we all had a hand in kind of coming up with this language and coming up with ideas as to really respond to the feedback that we received at the Rule Development Workshop. As to your question, whether the adults portion applies to students, I do understand your concern where, when we say adults, that typically means somebody 18 and older. I could work on drafting some language where it says adults maybe, maybe, well, because it says employees, visitors, contracted vendors, or volunteers, we could add something that it says, "This does not include adult students," if that would appease the Board and definitely clarify that section.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we can have this conversation offline, because I do understand that you'll be meeting with Board members separately, but I do want to go over just the roles of the SROs and where we can look to delineate between discipline and the role of SROs. I know that that's been a concern in our community, and the Board has discussed that further, and I believe the outcome of that discussion was that we would look at ways to incorporate it into the student code of conduct when it came before us again to make sure that we had delineation and that we listed out, listed everything out so that it was very transparent, so that there was no inconsistencies across our district, because we don't want what happens at one school to be different than happens at another, you know, consistency matters. And so we can talk about that offline, but I just did want to bring that to your attention. And again, thank you for this, for this policy. It's so nice to be the lead on this. When I did research on Baker Acts and school boards, I couldn't find another school board that had a Baker Act policy. It was all kind of in management directives, so the fact that we're going to be the first county that I know of to come out with a policy as comprehensive as this makes it a proud day to be a school board member. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Gallo, and I wish you could be here in the chambers, because I can tell you that some of our law enforcement officers who have worked on this are very pleased that you and the Board are pleased. So why don't we just take a moment, everybody that has worked on this to get us to this point, if you'd stand for just a minute, so we can thank you? Awesome. So I have, I echo everything that Member Gallo said about just how this is, really had been extremely important to this Board. Maybe, maybe it's a function, I don't like to be sexist, but maybe it's a function of all of us being moms or all of us, or just the, I mean, you don't have to be a mom, you can be a parent, to just relate to this experience for a child and to know that we have to keep our children safe and we have to protect them sometimes from themselves, but we also have to do it in the kindest way possible. So a lot of effort has gone into this, and a lot of heart has gone into this, and that helps tremendously to get us where we are. I want to double back to the point that Member Gallo raised about the concerns that we had about the occasional instance that I've heard of where a law enforcement officer is called into a disciplinary meeting unnecessarily. And Member Gallo mentioned incorporating it into the Code of Student Conduct. One place we discussed incorporating it, and I should have brought this up, Chief, yesterday in our meeting about our contract with law enforcement agencies, was to reinforce that also in that contract, that it's important not just for the principal, the deans, the counselors, to know what they are and aren't supposed to do, but it's also important for our law enforcement officers to be able to say, "Stop, wait a minute. This is not a criminal situation. This is not a place that I need to be." The checks and balances, that we all need to know what our role is supposed to be. So, Chief, I would ask, if we haven't addressed that, if you can, I think it's a relatively minor thing, we just want to make sure that they know where we expect them to be as a district and not just at local school level. And then whatever we need to do to incorporate that into policy is also important if it's not already abundantly clear. The other question that I had actually bounces back to the conversation, Chief, we had yesterday, the CIT training. By statute, the SROs have to have that training. Chief, am I remembering correctly that they have a year to get that training? Am I confusing this? And I'm not finding fault, I just want to make sure that the language we use is consistent with--
No, I'm glad you asked. We want to add that in there, that they have, want to sign to the unit, up to a year to get it. It's not that easy to get that training. I've been trying to get it and haven't been able to receive it. I got all my commanders through it, all my sergeants, all the classes are full, and because the agencies know they've got to get their people in. So that's a good problem to have, a full class, but we need 100% compliance. Right now, currently, all my, all my people that are assigned to schools that have any school assignment are currently through CIT. Apocca PD, ACOE PD, Winter Garden PD, Winter Park PD, all report 100% compliance with that. The other agencies just, we queried them and asked them, they just haven't got back with us. They're going back through their training records, as you might imagine, the Sheriff's Office has quite a lot of people to get through it. So we're auditing that, and then we're going to get back with them and, again, encourage them to get their people through as soon as they can.
Thank you, Chief. So Ms. Kapinski, I think my question to you is, statutorily, is there a window of time by which our SROs can have their training? Because right now, and I understand the challenge, that we are putting SROs in the schools because we need them there, and statutorily, if we have to have the training beforehand, we may not be able to comply with putting them in there. If we do have that window, I want it to be more clear in the policy so that there's consistency, because this, the language, the way it's written, certainly would imply that nobody is in a school without the training. And I'm not trying to put you on the spot. If you don't have an answer for us today, I think that's a good thing for us to look at and to make sure that we're complying with the statute, the statute is consistent with what we're doing, and our policy mirrors both, okay?
So I can actually answer that question. I do have Ms. Cowens here as well.
Great.
Back here somewhere. But she works with district police and advises on those matters, and her and I have discussed previously, and there's not actually a timeframe on the statute itself. It just says that they shall complete the mental health crisis intervention training, and then it has to be developed by a national organization with expertise in mental health. So there's not a timeline in there. I didn't put a timeline in the policy because I know that there's kind of a negotiation aspect to it, because we're asking our partners to do something that by statute, they're not technically required to do within a certain timeframe, but I'll let Ms. Cowens elaborate on that a little bit more.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. As Ms. Kapinski was saying, Florida Statute 1006.12 says that they have to complete the training, but there's no timeline for that completion. And so Chair Jacobs, that's why we brought it up in our meeting yesterday. One of the things we want to add to the SRO contract this year is giving them that one year period of time to complete the training, because as Chief just mentioned, the classes are full. Also, we noticed that a lot of the classes are offered during the school day when our officers have to be on our campuses pursuant to the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Act. So we are trying to give them that window of time to make sure that they get it done, knowing that classes are full, and trying to hope that they can get some scheduled during days where we might be having a teacher workday or something like that.
Thank you. So Ms. Kapinski, can I get you to go back to Slide 20, where we have the language? And that helps tremendously to understand that language says they must complete, but doesn't say prior to them entering the campus or being assigned, they must have completed, two different things. But the language, oh, I'm sorry. So what does the language in this say?
So I copied it verbatim from 1006.12, because whenever something's in statute, I don't like to change it.
Great, great.
So it just says they are required to complete.
Thank you. I don't have one of these screens up here, so I'm always at a little disadvantage, but I was going to suggest that we put in that section so that people understand where that language came from. You got it, never mind. Great job. Let me move on to Member Lopez. Member Lopez, you're recognized.
Yes. I did not queue here.
I'm so sorry. Let's go, oh, okay, that's Member Bird. Oh, I'm sorry, we're out of order in our seats here. Member Bird?
Yeah, I'm in Joanna's seat, so sorry. I had a quick question about that training. Who is, who gives that training, or who is that training through? Chief?
I am going to defer to Chief Holmes on that.
So Valencia Community College has a Public Safety Institute there. It's offered through the Public Safety Institute. Aspire is the medical provider that's involved and engaged in that, and the report I got back from my police commanders, who I required to attend this, was it was a really good training, and they wish it would have had it earlier in their career.
Sure, absolutely.
That's the good news.
Member Bird?
Well, to follow up on that, you know, we have such a great relationship with Valencia and Aspire. I'm wondering if we can use our relationship with them and our desire to possibly, you know, offer these, more of these trainings, or that we have them in the evenings, so they're more accessible for our officers? Is that something we could maybe approach them about?
We'll do our best to use our leverage.
Okay, thank you. And then I just had queued up to say exactly what Member Gallo said. This policy is really, really fantastic, and the team did a terrific job, and I agree with Member Gallo. It's one of these things that, that just makes you proud to have been here when this happened and to be a part of it, because, you know, this is, this is such a difficult issue, and it's hard, and it's painful, and it's just, anything that we can do to clarify it, make it transparent, and know ahead of time what we need to do, be prepared, it's just, it's so much better for our kids and our families. So I, kudos to the team. You guys did a fantastic job of listening to us and listening to our concerns, and it's just, it's terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Member Colbert.
Not to be an echo chamber, but it is never a waste of time to say thank you for really good work, all of you, you know, our law enforcement, guidance, legal. This is great policy, as other Board members have said. I really appreciate the consistency, the language, simplification of the language, really use of that Threat Procedures Guide, the role and training of the SROs. This was one of our longest work sessions because it was very important, and you all clearly heard and incorporated the priorities and concerns of this Board. So as Chair said, you took the words right out of my mouth. This is policy that has a lot of heart on a really, really difficult subject. So I'm very, very grateful, and I can see this policy becoming a model policy in the state of Florida. I think it should be. So thank you, all of you, for your good and hard work. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Colbert. Let me ask Dr. Williams, I also have queued up, General Counsel. Any advice to me, or is it really the General Counsel?
It was, it was really me.
Oh, my gosh, okay. General Counsel, you're--
I just wanted to point out, in our Orange County Sheriff's Office agreement that was executed in 2019 for two years, as you recall, in, on page eight of that agreement, under the heading titled Cooperation Between the Parties, Section Eight provides that SROs are not school disciplinarians, and then it goes into, "The school will not transport suspended or disruptive students unless authorized by their supervisor, and the party shall cooperate in informing the student's parents in the event the student is being transported to another location." So we already have that disciplinary impartial, but we can take a look at that and revise that if we need to.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we can probably clarify it and make it just a bit stronger, because there are times when discipline and law enforcement do intersect, and we do want to make sure that our law enforcement offices, when we believe there's a likelihood of criminal violations, that they are included at the earliest stage, I believe, and yet, at the same time, we want to make sure that nobody is misusing law enforcement as a lever on our students. And sadly, that has happened in the nation in several cases, and we want to make sure it doesn't happen here to our students as much as we possibly can. So we have no further comments or questions from Board members? Dr. Jenkins? All right. If there's nothing further to add, other than kudos, great job, everyone. We do, we do think this should be a model policy. We are extremely proud of you and the work we've done, and we know that our students will be better, healthier, and emotionally sounder because of your great efforts. Thank you. And this meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.